I'd like to call the meeting in order. I'd ask everyone to please rise. Ledge Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which says, "One nation under God, indivisible, and every being." Please be seated. Welcome, everyone. Township of Old Bridge Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting, August 1, 2024. Adequate notice of this meeting of the Old Bridge Township Zoning Board of Adjustment has been provided in accordance with the Open Publics Meeting Act, at least forty-eight hours prior to the commencement of this meeting, by prominently posting in the municipal complex, giving the time, the date, the location, and the agenda of this meeting, also by mailing such announcements to the home news and tribune, filing a copy of such announcement with the municipal clerk, and posting the agenda on the municipal website. Ms. Porcelli, could we have a roll call, please?
Certainly. Ms. Andrews is absent. Ms. Chevalier?
Here.
Mr. Izzo?
Yeah.
Mr. Scogno?
Here.
Mr. Stoner?
Here.
Ms. Testaverde, absent. Mr. Victoria?
Here.
Mr. Singh, absent. Ms. Chairman Sullivan?
Here. All right, we have six members sitting at present. I'm not sure if Mr. Singh will be with us this evening. A couple of housekeeping matters. If you have a cellphone on you, which I can pretty much guarantee everybody does, please silence it so it doesn't interrupt the testimony this evening. Also, this meeting is being televised live on YouTube TV, that you can revisit this meeting at any time and afterwards to, if you wish, to review it. Also, we're going to have to shut down probably at ten, should it go that long. By our rules, we now close at ten for public meeting, to save the public for the last half hour. So, under no circumstances will the meeting go beyond ten thirty. Having said that, we have a couple of business items to handle before we have our application for this evening. And I will in advance let you know that if you have an agenda, the last item on the agenda was fifty-four dash twenty twenty-three Z, Conserve Irrigation. That is four-two-nine-one, Old Bridge, Madawan Road. That matter has been adjourned. The applicant proposes to operate a irrigation company out of a former dry cleaner. Public hearing for this matter will be adjourned to September nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, with further notice. If you hear on that matter, once again, it will not be heard this evening. It will be on the calendar for September nineteenth. Having said that, I'll move back to our agenda, and we have resolutions. Sitting for counsel this evening is Jeffrey Chaney Esquire. We welcome him. And now you get to go to work. Fourteen dash twenty twenty-four Z, Lisa Lynch. There was a C variance revised. Mr. Chaney?
Yes, our first resolution this evening is, as the chairman said, it's a resolution granting bulk variance relief to Lisa Lynch for two-oh-two Morganville Road in Madawan, New Jersey, formerly known as Block one-two-two-six-one, Lot twenty-two. Public hearings were held for the application on May sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, and June twentieth, twenty twenty-four. Applicant seeks to install a forty-by-thirty, forty-foot-by-thirty-foot pole barn to store cars and motorcycles on the property. The variance relief is required as the application proposes twelve-hundred square feet, whereas six-hundred square feet is permitted, and the maximum height of sixteen-and-a-half feet is proposed where fifteen feet is permitted. Prostructure, applicant testified that the proposed structure will allow for indoor storage of several vehicles and equipment, and the current conditions, sorry, the conditions will allow for the outdoor storage of vehicles and reduce clutter in the rear yard. The proposed structure will promote a desirable visual environment, allow for better use of the property. Applicant further testified that as a condition of approval, it will not be used for a living space, nor will plumbing be installed, and will not be used for any commercial activity. Application was subject to public comment, but no members of the public testified. Conditions of approval, as already noted, the applicant will demolish the existing shell on the property. The structure shall not be used for living space. The structure shall not include any plumbing. The structure shall not be used for any commercial activity, and the proposed project will be completed within one year.
Thank you, Mr. Chaney. Board members, you've heard the resolution as written. Someone move that for adoption, please.
Chevalier, I'll move it.
Second, Scogno?
Moved in second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Mr. Victoria?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. Fifteen dash twenty twenty-four Z, Salvatore Tensari, C variance. Once again, Mr. Chaney?
Resolution, as the chairman said, resolution granting bulk variance relief to Salvatore Tensari for twenty-three Steinhardt Avenue in Old Bridge, New Jersey, formerly known as Block two-six, uh, twenty-six zero-zero-seven, Lot thirty-seven. Application was subject to a public hearing on July eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. The applicant testified in favor of his application to install a five-foot-by-twenty-six-foot front-covered porch on his property. The front yard setback proposed is nineteen feet, whereas twenty-five feet is required. Applicant testified that the front porch will allow for better enjoyment of the front yard, provide a covered entrance for the family and guests, and improve the curb appeal of his home. Applicant further testified that as a condition of approval, the porch will not be closed in, and there will be no plumbing installed in the structure. The improvement will be designed in a fashion that matches the home. Matter is open to public. No members of the public testified. As a condition of approval, as previously noted, the structure will not be enclosed, and no plumbing will be installed in the structure. Further, the proposed development will be completed within one year.
Thank you, Mr. Chaney. Board members, once again, you've heard the resolution. Someone move for adoption, please.
Chevalier, I'll move it.
Is there a second?
Second, Stoner.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Mr. Victoria?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. The final one this evening of resolutions is sixteen dash twenty twenty-four Z. It's Clyde Cerum, C variance and design waiver. Once again, Mr. Chaney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, as a bulk variance, a resolution granting bulk variance relief to Clyde Cerum for twenty, sorry, two-hundred-eighty Bayview Drive in Lawrence Harbor, New Jersey, Block fifty-five, Lot two-hundred-eighty. The public hearing was held on July eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. Applicant testified in favor of his application for variance relief and design waivers to legitimize a driveway and paper project installed on this property between May twenty twenty-four, sorry, between March and May twenty twenty-four. The work was done to replace an existing driveway in poor repair and to add a paper walkway at the rear of the driveway. The applicant testified the improvement, sorry, the improvement requires bulk variance relief for the side patio setback where zero feet is proposed and three feet is required, and for a landscape area ratio where thirteen-point-four-three is proposed and forty-five percent is required. Design waiver is further required as a zero-foot setback is proposed where five feet is required. Applicant further testified that the installation of the pavers and driveways alleviated drainage problem by including curbing along the property line and grading of the improvements, which directs runoff to the street. Applicant further provided two exhibits for the board's consideration, A1, photo of property before improvements, and A2, photo of property after improvements.
Thank you, Mr. Chaney. Is that all?
Uh, just a couple of conditions, sorry. Sorry, had to catch my breath there for a second. Proposed develop, yes, the conditions of approval, proposed development will be completed within one year. No vehicles will be parked on the pavers, and applicant will address any runoff issues with neighboring properties. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
This is not a sprint, it's a marathon.
Yeah, long night ahead of us.
All right. Board members, you've heard the resolution. Someone move that for adoption, please.
Chevalier, I'll move it.
Somebody second?
Second, Stoner.
Mr. Stoner, thank you. Roll call, please.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Mr. Victoria?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. Next up on the agenda, I'm going to ask Mr. Chaney to do one more thing, and that's going to be to swear in our professionals, Vina Sawant and Bernard Tetral.
Raise your hand. You solemnly swear as the truth of testimony for which you're about to provide.
I do.
Thank you.
State your name on the record, just so if it's blind, we don't have a TV to look at.
Vina Sawant. Just each of you. Yeah.
Vina Sawant.
Bernard Tetral.
Professional engineer?
Professional engineer.
Thank you, sir. All right, we have one application for this, for the evening, board members. The matter is forty-four dash twenty twenty-three Z. This is a continuance. It's MCB Landscaping. It's the low-medium-density residential R-twenty Zone Block one-one-two-five-seven, Lot four. Physical location's four-two-four-four County Highway five-sixteen. This is for a home-based landscaping business. Applicant proposes to operate a landscaping business in the rear of the subject property. The applicant owns said property and resides in a single-family home on the property. It's a bifurcated application requiring a D variance. Michael Collins Esquire is representing the applicant. Mr. Collins, please come forward. All right, sir, when we last, when we last left off, I believe the date was? April eighth?
That sounds right. Yes. So, hopefully, everyone's summer's going well. It has been a little bit of time. Just as a housekeeping item, are all the board members that are present this evening eligible to participate? Everyone's?
Is every, I think the only two, and I think they've signed certifications?
Greg Marine, can you just write they both?
Mr. Victoria was present to the last meeting, and Mr. Izzo signed a certification that you notarized.
Okay.
Yes.
Fantastic. Thank you. Just want to make sure of that for voting purposes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. Again, my name is Michael Collins. I represent MCB Landscaping. The applicant here, the entity is owned by Mr. Mark Boyko, who lives with his wife at the residence at forty-two forty-four County Route five-sixteen, Block one-one-two-five-seven, Lot four. As mentioned by the chairman, this is a continuance of a bifurcated variance seeking the ability from a use standpoint to have Mr. Boyko's landscaping equipment for his small business stored in his, the rear of his property. At the last meeting, we did have proofs placed on the record by both Mr. Boyko and Kate Keller, Mr. Boyko's planner. The board did request at that meeting and strongly suggested that Mr. Boyko retain a traffic expert. We did do that in the way of retaining John Ray of McDonough and Ray Associates Incorporated, and Mr. Ray provided a report that was submitted to the board, and your board professionals did amend their letter to reflect same. So, if there aren't any objections, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to bring Mr. Ray forward for some direct testimony.
Absolutely, and I'll just note for the record that you are not using a stenographer this evening, so any record would only be available through either the TV, cable TV here or YouTube Live.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. We don't have any objection to that, and we are going to be relying upon the video from the former meeting and this meeting if there were the need for a transcript, which we certainly don't hope to be the case, but.
Thank you, Mr. Collins.
Okay, Mr. Ray is here. I guess if he could be sworn?
Mr. Ray, can you state, can you state your full name, just the record?
John Ray, R-E-A.
Raise your hand. Thank you. You solemnly swear as the truth of testimony for which you're about to provide.
I do.
Thank you, sir.
If you would just put his credentials on the record. He's well-known to this board, however, for the record.
Absolutely. Mr. Ray, can you state your credentials?
Very simple. I'm a licensed professional engineer. In the state of New Jersey, my field of specialty is traffic engineering. I've appeared before many boards throughout the state, including this board and the planning board in Old Bridge, and, and I think two-hundred-and-fifty other towns now, unfortunately. I have fifty years' experience in the traffic engineering field, two engineering degrees, and I have my own business, McDonough and Ray Associates. We have offices in Manasquan and Westfield, New Jersey.
Thank you for doing that for those at home. I've seen you for eighteen years and
Yes, Mr. Sullivan.
And I think most of the board members are familiar with it, but it does help those watching at home know
Correct.
who is speaking and what they're going to speak about. I'm sorry, Mr. Collins, continue.
No need to apologize. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Ray, you are obviously retained by Mr. Boyko during the pendency of this zoning board application. Could you just provide the board an overview of the work you performed following your retainer?
Sure. I reviewed the application with respect to the intensity of the use from a traffic standpoint. I obtained a statement of operations from Mr. Boyko, who operates the landscaping business, because first of all, I needed to see what the intensity of the use was from a traffic perspective, as far as traffic generation is concerned. I've been out to the site to establish existing roadway and traffic conditions. As everyone knows, Old Bridge, Madawan Road is also Middlesex County Route five-sixteen, and for those of you who may not know, the county road network is, there are different designations. The five-hundred series county roads, of which County Route five-sixteen is one, are the most major county roads. They are the most significant. They are arterial roadways. So, all of the five-hundred series county roads throughout the state of New Jersey, including Middlesex County, are the busiest and the most heavily-traveled county roads. I reviewed the statement of operations, been out to the site to look at the alignment of Route five-sixteen in the area of the site, and all I can tell the board is it's very unusual for me to be hired to do a traffic study for something that, in my opinion, is as insignificant as this application is from a traffic standpoint. We are essentially talking about perhaps ten driveway movements throughout the course of the day, as far as vehicles, employee vehicles entering the site, taking the landscaping trucks off the site, bringing them back in the afternoon, and then picking up their personal automobiles and leaving the site again. At the end of the day, the intensity of the use is comparable approximately to one single-family home, which, under the ITE, the Institute of Transportation Engineers rates, generates ten peak-hour trips per day, one single-family home. So, as I've indicated before, it's very unusual for me to be hired to do a traffic study or to come testify, and I prepared a traffic statement, which is dated July twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. In my opinion, the use variance can be approved without having an adverse or detrimental impact on traffic conditions in the area due to the very low intensity of the use itself, approximately ten peak-hour movements during the course of a day, probably a lot fewer than that during the roadway peak hours, which generally occur between seven and nine in the morning and four to six in the afternoon. And so, it's, it's, it's really a low-intensity traffic use from that standpoint, and that's why I believe the use variance, as far as the negative criteria is concerned, I do not think approval of this use will have a significant negative impact on traffic conditions along Route five-sixteen. Okay. I, I do want to add one thing. Because it is a county road, should the applicant be successful in obtaining a use variance from the zoning board, we would have to come back with a site plan, and we would have to go to the county to get a county approval, and it is my expectation, because the current driveway is basically a residential driveway, it is my expectation that should we get the use variance and go to the county for the county approval, they will require us to build a more substantial driveway connection to Route five-sixteen to accommodate the landscaping vehicles that are coming onto and off the site. My client understands that, and he's willing to do whatever is required by the county as far as widening and improving the driveway.
Mr. Ray read my mind. That was the one item that was in the review letter that we definitely did want to hit on. I don't have any further questions. Certainly, I think we'd be happy to hear anything from the board.
Thank you. Mr. Tetral?
Yes. I, you know, reviewed the original, had an original review back in March, and then Mr. Ray prepared this letter, which I reviewed. And, you know, I think some of these issues pertain to the plan itself, not necessarily to the traffic report, but they were under traffic, so some of the same comments still remain. You mentioned about submission to the county, and you, as you said, it's very possible a county is going to ask for changes to the driveway once they get involved in it. You know, my concern is that, you know, it doesn't appear, you know, I haven't gone to the county yet. I understand, you know, your position that this is, you know, basically similar volumes to a residential development. However, it's not similar vehicles. It's trucks in and out, coming, you know, in and out at different hours of the day. Not a residential house would be passenger vehicles. So, the makeup of the vehicles that are coming in and out is different. If the driveway were not improved, it's possible, you know, it's basically, right now, from what I remember, the site plans, wide enough for one vehicle. So, you know, if there's a truck onsite coming out or parked, truck coming into the site is going to be sitting out on the county route, which is a problem. So, I think right off the bat, you know, if this were to be approved, you're going to be looking at widening that driveway wide enough for a two-way driveway. But we don't know until go to the county. And this, that was kind of my first observation. The other one is that, and, and I've dealt with some other landscaping business, a lot of times, it seems, as they grow, they run out of room for parking, and the employees begin to park on the major road, and therefore, I recommend that no parking signs be erected to prevent this. The other observation you mentioned about looking at the site trips, and I, you know, I'm sure that's the way it operates, you know, you've looked at that. I appreciate it. The concern here is that, is there any, is there any anticipation of the applicant adding employees in the future that would change those conditions, increase the amount of traffic coming in and out, increase the amount of employees parking wherever? And I, like I said, I don't think there's really any provision for parking right now on site. The other concern, and this, this would go along with the county submission, is that the site distances would need to be looked at coming out of the site. I mentioned the width of the driveway, and this is another site plan issue. Truck circulation needs to be varied and discussed. It hasn't been. His concerns that right turns from roadway into the existing road, and its impact on Lot, on Lot five, did the location of driveway apron at the southeast corner of the parcel, and reconfiguration of the driveway be needed. That was my concerns, which were basically in, you know, a lot of these were in my March sixth letter, so they're still sitting there and need to be resolved at some point.
Well, I, I guess I can attempt to address some of the items. There's quite a bit there, but I'll try to go through the things that I think I heard as far as the concerns are. First of all, again, County Route five-sixteen is a major county arterial, and there are other commercial uses along the five-sixteen corridor that generate truck traffic that access the county road, all up and down the five-sixteen corridor, including schools, school buses from high school, middle school. It's a major county road, and so a lot of trucks enter and exit the county road from different land uses. I concur with you a hundred percent that the driveway has to be widened. I've told my client that. He understands that. And again, if we get the use variance, it has to be subject to a site plan, and I think a lot of the items that you, you mentioned in your report that need to be addressed, and I agree with you, they need to be addressed. We need to provide for adequate onsite circulation for the landscaping trucks that will use the site, agree a hundred percent, and adequate parking for the employees. I agree with you a hundred percent. We will agree, I think we would need an ordinance from the elected officials to prohibit parking on five-sixteen in the vicinity of the site. We would agree to that a hundred percent. We don't want anybody parking out on five-sixteen. We agree to parking restrictions should the elected officials decide that's, that's appropriate for the site. We agree a hundred percent. So, I, I think the issues that you raised are totally legitimate. They have to be addressed, but usually at the use variance stage, we, we don't get involved into those details until site plan. A lot of times, if, if an applicant is not successful in getting a use variance, it's, there's a lot of expense and time involved in making an application to the county, and it's usually not done until the variance is granted and you come back in for site plan. But I, I take no issue with anything that you've raised.
Appreciate, appreciate that. And the reason I bring these up, I understand these are issues that get resolved later on after a use variance is approved. I just wanted them out there to, so the applicant was aware of the issues that they're going to face, getting, you know, that use variance wouldn't allow the site to be, remain as is.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Approval is going to require reconfiguration on the site to address, you know, what it's being used as. That was my only concern.
And I take no issue with anything you've said.
Appreciate that.
And if I could just note, in terms of the parking on 516, I just spoke with my client. If that were, if the board wanted to make that a condition of approval about not having any parking out there, he would have no objection to that, as well as if the governing body wanted to do something by ordinance, that wouldn't be objectionable either. And also, much appreciated on the comments. And I can assure you that the plans that were submitted by the engineer that has been retained by Mr. Boyko, a lot of the circulation issues have already been taken into account through those discussions. And we expect that if the board is willing to grant this use variance, we would be back in due course and providing the appropriate proofs on those issues.
Anything else, Mr. Tetral?
No, that's it for now.
So Juan, did you have anything at this point?
I don't have any questions, but just a comment that I think in this particular case, because it's a use variance, it is a residential zone, and the bringing of the business is going to change the character. I think traffic is critical to the evaluation of the use variance. I think the negative impacts associated with the use definitely changed the character, and especially knowing that there is quite a lot of traffic on county Route 516. I thought it was important to have some sort of traffic testimony.
Duly noted. I guess just one thing for the record, Mr. Ray. Could you speak to the immediate vicinity of Mr. Boyko's residence and the types of uses that are in that vicinity?
Well, there are other residential uses in the area that access the county road in that particular area. And I, you know, the alignment of the road is such that, and Bernard mentioned this about, you know, adequate site distance, we would absolutely have to establish site triangles at the driveway. The county will make us do that in accordance with the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials, ASHTO, standards. And we would have to do that. And that would all be part of site plan. I do understand that it's a residential zone. But again, the level of intensity based on the, and I believe Mr. Boyko has testified in front of the board before, and he's laid the operation out with respect to the number of employees and the amount of traffic that's going to be, being generated. Like I said at the outset, it's very unusual for me to be called to testify for something as insignificant as this. It's okay. There's no Yankee game tonight. It's fine.
Mr. Ray, one last question. When you were studying the site, did you notice any other non-residential use within that residential zone?
I did not when I was out there.
Thanks.
Board members on my left, questions of Mr. Ray.
Questions behind the mic.
You have to put your mic on, please.
I have, I have other questions.
Oh, well, just of this witness right now.
Hmm, no, not right now.
Anyone else on my left?
I have a few.
And there is nobody on my right tonight.
I have a few questions.
Go ahead.
I know this area. Obviously, I live, I'm not within the 200-foot zone, I think. I'm way outside of that. But I live on 516. I know this area very well. This is right next to Boja and Boja Accounting Office, correct?
No.
I didn't notice that.
It's not.
Because I'm looking at it, it seems like.
Further, further south.
This is the open lot next to, trying to look at it on the map.
Boshabosh is next to the, would be on the west, the eastbound side. This is on the westbound side.
There are several residential neighborhoods on the south side of 516 that access the road that bracket this property on either side. That I did notice.
Okay. Then I recant, because I was going to say, the location I was looking at there was, there's no driveway. So I was questioning, like, the improvements to the driveway, because I didn't know of a driveway at that location, but I was looking at the, the wrong location. The only thing I would like to comment on is, you know, the traffic on 516 is astounding. It's significant. So to say, you know, keep saying insignificant, I mean, any little change could make a big difference to 516. So I think it's something that definitely should be really looked at. I mean, it's bumper-to-bumper every day on 516.
Yeah, I'm not saying the traffic on 516 is insignificant. I'm just saying that based on the statement of operations, that appears to be insignificant. Like I said, I'm very rarely ever called upon to testify for something that generates ten trips a day. It's very rare.
Yeah, I'd agree with you. A landscaping company generally doesn't create a ton of traffic, but 516 is a pretty sticky area when it comes to traffic. No, I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Anybody else? For the record, I know Mr. Boyko had put on the record that no signage would be put on the property, and no customers would come to the property.
That is correct.
All right. That still stands, I would assume.
Absolutely.
Okay. You have any other witnesses you're going to bring forward?
I don't, Mr. Chairman. So I believe there might be some other parties that wish to be heard, so we're happy to allow that to move forward.
Well, there is an objector's case.
Yes.
Which will take place when you rest. So.
We're happy to rest, Mr. Chairman. It's the summer. We want to make this as concise as we can.
Very good. Is it Mr. Gorski?
Yes, sir.
Counselor, I believe. Alan Gorski, representing.
The Commons at Old Bridge.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. I just have a couple of questions for Mr. Ray, if I can.
Right ahead, sir.
Okay. Now, the testimony of Mr. Boyko was that he has a maximum of four trucks on the site. And he indicated there were, I think, five or six employees. So do you take into account that it would not only be the, you keep saying it's insignificant, it's the residents plus those additional.
Correct. It'd be like adding one additional single-family home to the property from a traffic perspective. And I do understand and appreciate that there will be landscaping trucks entering and exiting, not just private automobiles. But I still believe, based on the volumes, we're talking about one traffic movement per hour over the course of a typical day. If there are ten traffic movements during a normal business day, I don't see where that's significant.
Yeah. I double that. I say in in the morning and out in the morning, and then in the evening and out in the evening. Still insignificant.
Absolutely.
Okay. My other concerns are not really with the traffic study. I understand from the witness's testimony that there would need to be improvements to the, to the apron, so to speak, and that would affect the water. And I'm more concerned with the property in the back than the frontage on 518. So I have no more questions.
So understand, he's going to be here. You can reexamine him should you need to.
Yeah, I have no more questions for the witness.
Okay. Do you have, you're going to put on witnesses yourself, right?
No, I am not. I mean, what happened was, at the last hearing, we put conditions on the record.
Okay.
And I don't have a transcript or the YouTube of that, but I can read them into the record again just to refresh everybody's recollection. But I don't know if this is the appropriate time before.
This is your case, so I can tell you what you said last time.
Well, not all the same board members were here, so I don't know.
Oh, you want to put them on? Go ahead. I would appreciate that.
If you want to repeat it, okay. Well, I had discussions with Mr. Collins to address our concerns, limited the hours, eight to six, Monday to Friday, to be residential landscaping and not commercial landscaping, maybe start a little, end a little later in the summer, and end a little earlier in the winter. No weekends, except for snow events. There was a limit to four trucks and a personal vehicle. They were going to have to back the trucks in. We had that discussion, and that may affect the traffic in the turnaround space. There would be three bins only for mulch and other dirt and rock material, and there would be no freestanding piles. There would also be a rear area remaining wooded. We had discussions. It was about 230 to 240 feet. My clients at the Commons wanted the pole barn to be a neutral color. They didn't have a problem with having it be a barn red color. Obviously, there are issues with stormwater management that we will have to address at a later point in time if we ever get there. There were certainly concerns about the noise and the vehicles there, and those were going to be addressed, probably not in connection with the, with the use variance. The landscaping plans had a concern about an evergreen buffer, and there were certainly some trees that had been removed in the area, maybe not from this property. So there may need to be some tree management and replanting there. There was an agreement to have a tree expert take a look at that. Now, there's only a six-foot fence allowed in the back, and we had agreed to an eight-foot fence, and I believe that was going to be an amendment to the, to the use variance. I want to reserve my right to object to future site plan applications, because I do have many concerns that aren't really appropriate to address in connection with the use variance. And, I mean, concerning water retention and the runoff, we think there's a tension basin that may be needed, particularly when you start improving the apron and the access to the county road. That creates even more water problems. And not that I'm that familiar with the site, but the water usually runs off the road and heads to the back of the property, and that's where my concern lies, and the concern of my clients. So I believe that's everything that I addressed at the prior meeting, and I believe that's everything that Mr. Collins agreed to and placed on the record at the prior meeting. I can just remove my notes one more second to make sure I have everything. That's it for me.
Okay. If I were to put this in my own words, from what I've heard from you, you're not speaking against the use variance. You're speaking about items that you want done should they move forward. This is by, obviously, by forget application.
Yes.
At site plan, if that reaches that. Am I getting that right? So I don't know what the board is thinking.
Yes and no. I believe that when we get to site plan, this will ultimately fail, and I don't want him to go through the additional time and expense of trying to get a site plan through on this property. And I know this witness isn't capable of testifying to that. But we have serious concerns about the property, serious concerns about the water, serious concerns about the smell. And I wanted to raise these all at the time. I mean, obviously, the township engineer and township planner raised concerns also, which may be addressed at a zoning issue later. But I just don't want this client to go through this cost and expense for what I believe is a futile exercise.
Okay. So you do stand against the application?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And you're not presenting any other witnesses, correct?
No, I'm not.
Not at this point.
Mr. Chairman, can I be heard?
Yeah, absolutely.
With all respect to the council, I believe if the board reviews the previous transcript, it was made clear that we had worked cooperatively with the association and reached all of the terms that were set forth by them, and my client agreed to every single one, which council just outlined, and agreed to make those conditions of approval. And I think the transcript at the last meeting reflected that there was not opposition to the application in light of my client's willingness to agree to all those terms that were set forth by the association. So I do think it's a change in position slightly that was articulated there. But nevertheless, I do think it's important for the board to be aware that these were all conditions that were put out there, which will come at expense and obviously restrict my client. But he was very happy to agree to them in order to work with the association as a good neighbor.
Okay. So noting, he's taking a different position, is what you're saying, right?
That, and the fact that, you know, the conditions that were articulated were requests of the association that were agreed to by my client. I don't want them to just be viewed as hypotheticals, but as material concessions that were made in order to, at that point in time, have them take the position that they did. So this is new to me, and I spoke with council last week, so I'm surprised to hear that. But I think that the board should, you know, as it reviews this matter, place the weight of its consideration on the fact that these conditions were requested and agreed to by my client.
It's a limited objection. I just.
I don't know if they're going to pick you up on, you got, those are directional.
It's a limited objection at this point in time. I expressed my concerns regarding the futility of it. The board will make a decision.
Well, with all respect, if the, if the concern is about what you claim to be the futility of the site plan, that's really not a position as to the use variance that's before the board tonight. And if you're reserving the right to oppose that, I respect that, but that's.
You already did that.
Okay. So I think, I just want to make it clear. My perception is that it's a no position because of these conditions, which is what I understand.
I'll certainly add, by all means, you have your right to, you do have your right to oppose.
Of course.
At that, at that stage, assuming it makes it to that stage, you, by all means, you do have that right to oppose. You would not be waiving that or any, just, like you or any other person of the public would.
Well, just for the record, my client would be here today, had an emergency, worked for the Navy. Long story. I don't want to go through it.
Understood.
I would have further discussion with him today if necessary, but he's not here.
Thank you.
Thank you for appearing. You have no rebuttal any, at this point, right?
Nothing further with respect to council.
I'm going to open the public portion, seeing as this, you have rested, you've rested the case, the objector's case, Mr. Gorski?
Yes.
You've rested.
In full disclosure, Mr. Chairman, there may be a second objector's case. I know there were other parties who were looking to speak at the last meeting, so I just want to make sure everyone's heard on the record, so that we're not back here another day.
Well, council was bringing an actual case. I think other people may have complaints. I don't know that they're bringing the objector's case. I haven't been notified of that. Okay.
Okay.
But we'll find out. I'm going to open the public portion on this matter. It's 44-2023Z. This is MCB Landscaping. The location is 4244 County Highway 516. This is for home-based landscaping business. I'm going to open the public portion, and if anyone wants to speak, I'm going to ask them to either stand or raise their hand, and we'll listen to everyone. Okay, so you'll be first. I would ask you to come, get comfortable, sit in the chair there. Once you do, the board attorney is going to swear you in, okay, sir? Make sure that light is green. And again, these microphones need to be fairly close to your mouth to pick up, okay? So you can move that. Thank you. Board attorney will swear you in, sir.
Sir, can you state, first, can you state your name for the record?
Robert.
Robert? What's your last name, sir?
Vernaccio, V as in Victor, E-R-N-A-C-H-I-O. N-A.
N-A. V-E-R-A-N-A?
No A.
Oh. Vern, oh.
Do it again.
Veranaccio, not Vernaccio, not Vernaccio. Yeah, I got you.
I had, yeah, I had this time for the last meeting. Mr. Vernaccio did speak at the last meeting. We'll put you under oath again, sir, just so there's no.
And can you just state your address as well for the record?
What?
State your address.
4252 Highway 516.
All right. Raise your right hand, sir. Do you solemnly swear us the truth of the testimony for which you're about to provide?
I do.
Thank you, sir.
It's your time now, so.
It's my time?
The board wants to hear, you are here to tell us something. I don't know whether you're going to object or you're going to agree to it, but tell us what you want us to hear.
If I'm out of line, please shut me down.
You're not, you're not going to be out of line. You're a resident here. You have every right to say what you want.
One of the last camp, Thomas's lawyer had made was, "Good neighbor." Well, good neighbors don't put no trespassing signs on their property and shine spotlights into their neighbor's house. Okay. This is, it was stated, "A small business. There's four trucks, five plows, a bobcat, a chipper, a salt spreader, a 200-gallon plastic tank to hold brine to spread on the roads, plus three sheds, plus piles of garbage, broken-down equipment, I'm going to say, a pickup liner smashed on the ground laying there, three trailer frames stacked on one another. And as far as coming in and out, the traffic, I don't know if the traffic man here knows 516. It's a one-lane road. They use two lanes going in and out of school on my side of the road, and they fly down those two lanes. That shoulder is used as a lane. It's not used as a road. It's a lane that they don't have to wait for the traffic light at the school. So they use that as another lane." And I heard driveway width mentioned. Could anybody tell me how much wider a driveway would?
That depends, sir. It's a standard driveway at present. I don't know the measure.
Six or six feet, maybe.
Well, I think they're bigger than that. But the county would probably require, if it was approved.
Yeah. If you're going to allow for two-way passage, and of course, this is subject to any, any rules that the township has on required driveway width for what would be, in effect, a commercial driveway now, no longer a residential driveway, you've got to have enough room to let trucks pass. Bare minimum would be 20. have enough room to let trucks pass. Bare minimum would be 20 feet. I, I would say probably more like 24 feet, to allow enough room for two trucks to pass each other, one coming in, one coming out. I would say bare minimum 20 feet.
We just had our property, my neighbor had his property surveyed. His driveway is three feet from my neighbor's property. He would never be able to make the driveway if it's 20 feet.
I think part, part of the submission, I think part, and this is part of what they will need to address if this is approved.
Okay.
It's not only widening, a wider driveway, but relocating the driveway. The driveway would probably be moved away from the property line.
It'd run into the house.
Well, that, that would have to be resolved by them.
Okay.
They'd have to make it work. You know, that's all things that their, their engineer would need to make work, whether, you know, I don't know, I guess in a worst-case scenario, there might be a partial demolition of the house to provide a driveway. I don't know. I, I, you know, I don't have the plan right in front of me, but these are all things that would need to be worked out by their engineer.
Okay.
Do you live adjacent to the, this property?
On the second house.
Two away to the east or the west? Or is that the north, east, south there?
East.
To the east, okay. On the same side of the street? Two homes?
On the third house from the questionable property.
Okay. You can continue.
It was said they came to the association and talked to the association. Well, we live next door. They didn't come to us to talk. They didn't ask us anything. And as far as I'm concerned, a pole barn is not a residential area. It's, it's gonna take up his whole lot, basically. He needs a turnaround to bring in tandem trucks for his stone and his mulch. And to pull out on 516 with a trailer or a tandem coming in, you have to go into the other lane. I've been there for 60 years, and I've been in a fire company for 30, and I can't tell you how many bodies I cut out of 516 in that area. That's all I have.
Okay, just so you understand, to be fair to you as a resident, this is what's called a bifurcated application. Bifurcated application, what it means is they're seeking the use, and all they have to do is get approval for the use. Now, that doesn't automatically mean that it continues on after that. They have to provide a site plan and come back. So there would be a lot of other issues, should this board favor this application, that may come up, and it doesn't restrict you from bringing that to the board's attention as well. So we're not really dealing, when, when Mr. Tetral, who's a professional engineer...
I understand that.
He's gonna have to review plans as well, should this get by the board this evening for the approval. Okay? So this may or may not be the final night. So you're not going to be shut down. I know you have a lot of issues. I know that you have a lot of feeling and emotion over this, and, and I can understand that. And I appreciate all the time you've put in for the fire company as well. And I'm sure that...
Thank you.
Some bad memories and some good memories. So I thank you for, for that. But don't feel, don't feel that we're shutting you down. If you wanna say anything else at this point, feel free. There's not gonna be any other witnesses tonight. That's all I'm telling you. So the only thing that's probably gonna happen is there may be other people here in the audience that wanna speak tonight. And we'll obviously let them about this application. And then I'm gonna ask the, finally, I mean, we give the final word to the applicant, the applicant's attorney, and ask if they wanna call for a vote this evening. So that's how it proceeds, just so you understand. Okay?
Okay.
All right, we thank you for coming up this evening and talking to the board.
Mr. Chairman, I was hoping to ask a couple questions of the gentleman on cross-examination.
Uh, he's not an objector.
He's offered sworn testimony. Any witness who offers sworn testimony under the municipal alias law is subject to cross-examination.
I don't have a problem.
Sir, if I could just ask you, you had mentioned a series of trucks, plows, salt spreaders, sheds, and piles of equipment. Is your testimony that those are currently on Mr. Boyko's property?
No, they've been trucked. They've been told to remove everything from the property by the zoning board. They've been out of there since March.
Okay, so...
But in two, in a year and a half to two years, he has accumulated enough stuff that he needed three dump truck loads to take all the junk out of there.
But, but sir, just to clarify for the record, none of that equipment is currently on the property?
No, it's not. He was told to remove it.
Okay. And also, in terms of outreach, have you, did you ever make any outreach to Mr. Boyko to express any concerns?
Yes, we did.
And can you outline that outreach?
We talked. He said he wanted a meeting with my neighbor and myself. My neighbor basically is in Boston for a while. She was home. We stood in the driveway. He rode right by us in his truck during the weekend, and didn't stop to talk. We were standing there waiting for him to talk. He rode right by us.
Okay, so you did not ever have a conversation?
No, I did. I had a conversation. And I told him what I didn't like there.
I don't have anything further. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay.
Now, I'll ask anyone in, in the audience here this evening who wants to be heard. Sir, you would be next. Same would apply. Please come up, take a seat. Board attorney'll swear you in.
Good evening, sir. Can you state your name for the record?
Jonathan Kozlik, J-O-N-A-T-H-A-N. Kozlik, K-O-Z as in zebra, L-I-K.
Thank you, sir. And can you just state your, your address, please?
4248 Highway 516. I'm directly next to applicant. I've read, I reside there. My mother is the owner of the property.
All right, Ms. Koz, you, you also spoke at the last meeting. You were under oath then, but I'm gonna ask the board attorney to please put you under oath as well now. Okay? Thank you.
Do you solemnly swear us the truth of the testimony for which you're about to provide?
I do.
Thank you, sir.
Again, those microphones are directional, so, yeah, keep it close to you. Thank you.
Yeah, I really just have a couple of quick comments about the use variance. I'll stick to that. I think a lot of my concerns were enunciated by the board engineers. As to the traffic issue, I know this gentleman here doesn't know where it is, but right after this, right after you pull out of the high school, you go down that slope. The property is right after that slope. There's a deer crossing, there's a municipal entrance where, where trucks are parked all the time, vehicles going in and out for the water system. There's a school cross, the school board sign there. I mean, I don't know the exact distance, but it's, you know, you look at that map, it's like that to the high school and, you know. So I know, they were said to be insignificant from a broad perspective, but from a local perspective, it is quite significant. In terms of some of the limitations that applicant proposes, I would have to say that they're simply not feasible to build on the other opponent's oppositions. I'm, I'm not official opposition at this point, but the other attorney's concerns. I've lived next door to the operation. I've seen it in full swing for several years, about 80% of it anyway. I know some of his equipment is still located off-site. And I simply don't see how, how it could possibly work in terms of vehicles coming in and out. There's such a flow to landscaping that the way it works is, you know, you have different employees coming in and out at different times of the day. You have different commercial trucks coming out at different times of the day. I mean, you have two to three small Kubotos loading the materials on for the, the trucks, and then they go back out to the job. It's a, it's not 10 times a day. It's a constant flow of traffic, from employee vehicles to large trucks dumping off materials, to repair, washing, maintenance of vehicles, broken-down lawn overs. I mean, it's major commercial equipment, and it's an all-day-long process. And I live next to it. It really has no business in a residential zone with retired elderly neighbors, the use. And you can't, it's simply not feasible to do anything with that. A couple of other points are, if you just look at those properties, I mean, you can see for all intents and purposes, they're fairly identical. I mean, I, I just don't see this property as being, being ident, as being unique enough to allow this use. Any one of the, all of those properties have natural buffers and some buffers that can be supplemented along the lines. I mean, the, the proper way to do this is just go ahead, you can rewrite the home business section of the code, or you could rezone the area, but a, a de-use application is not the appropriate means to deal with this particular case. I mean, what you're gonna have essentially is a domino effect where people are gonna have to essentially do what applicant dig and, you know, start small and then build big until, and hope no one says anything, and then apply for a de-variance. You're gonna, they're gonna have to sell it. I mean, I'm gonna, if I inherit the property, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to sell it for commercial use, or at least the commercial use in the back half. And then, you know, so just, if you're gonna, if you're gonna grant it, just go ahead and rezone those. There's, there's two more properties that are virtually identical. Just, just rezone them all, so that way the neighborhood can redeem the, the value of their properties. Let me see, was there... There is, there are some issues of, you know, it's not really feasible, but it, you know, given, would we really be here for a zoning board violation if you could entrust applicant to keep to those hours that he's saying he's gonna keep to, to keep the number of employees that he's gonna keep to? I mean, I know he struggled in the last session to name how many employees he really has. So, you know, the, obviously, the past behavior of applicant credibility come, come into question before the board, if you think any of those things can be, even if somehow this could be mitigated, there's the question of what, what's, what's he gonna do in the future? Um, let's see. Yeah, I think I'll just end on, yeah, just the, the idea that this, this is an all-day-long operation when it's in full swing with commercial vehicles and employees on-site. It's not anything that you want in a residential neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I have some questions.
Go ahead.
Mr. Kozlik, did you engage in filing complaints with the township with respect to Mr. Boyko?
That is correct.
And can you give an estimate of how many times you attempted to complain about Mr. Boyko?
I officially complained, and then they opened the case, or, and...
Do you have any estimate for how many times you contacted the township regarding Mr. Boyko?
Uh, probably half a dozen times through email, maybe more, probably similar number in, in person.
Okay. Did you ever knock on the door or attempt to speak to Mr. Boyko directly about these issues?
No.
I would like to provide the board with an exhibit that I'd asked to be labeled as A2, which is an email that I obtained under the Open Public Records Act from Mr. Kozlik. That was sent to Damian, to Daniel Hollahan and Damian Gill. I'll provide this to you for the record. Mr. Kozlik, are you familiar, does this email look like an email that you had sent to the township?
Looks familiar. Looks like a bullet point.
Okay.
That's how I write, yeah.
Okay. Would you be able to read for the board what you listed as the third bullet point?
Back of, back of property/business resembles a commercial junkyard filling, filling up with discarded equipment and supplies.
So it's your belief that Mr. Boyko's backyard resembled a commercial junkyard? Is that correct?
At the time of the complaint, "Commercial junk?" Yeah, it looked like a commercial business was storing its junk there. Not in, it's not like an auto body type thing, but yeah, it looked like a commercial junkyard.
Okay. I'd like to now provide the board with an exhibit I've introduced as A3. Mr. Kozlik, do you recognize the area that's depicted in the picture here?
Yes, that's my backyard.
And can you describe what's in the picture?
Uh, that's my garage, that's an old van, and a water saw.
And do you believe that these conditions at all might also resemble a junkyard with discarded equipment and supplies?
No.
Is that your testimony?
No, I mean, that's, that's a van we use for storage.
Does the van have license plates on it?
Not that I'm aware of. That's an old van.
So it's not registered or have proper license plates?
I have no idea. I've been looking to sell it for a long time, if anyone wants it.
Okay. I'll admit this is A4. Do you recognize that photo?
Yes, that's an old shed on the side of my house.
Okay, so you have, and that's a, the shed lacks a door and has equipment thrown about. Would that be a fair description?
Yeah, that would be a fair, yeah. My father's old junk. Once again, if anyone wants some.
Okay, so you filed...
Be glad to get rid of it.
So just to be clear, you complained about Mr. Boyko alleging junk, but you're testifying that you have junk of your own in your backyard?
I have some junk I gotta get rid of, but it's not connected with the business, and it's not a commercial business. I mean, yeah, I've gotten rid of a lot of junk. I could definitely take it out of the shed and get, put it in a dumpster. That's my next goal, to clean up the house in a residential way.
Okay. And I'd also like to provide the board with A, I believe it's A5 now?
Yeah.
Mr. Kozlik, do you recognize what is depicted in this photo? Okay. And do you see any conditions of any junk or any extraneous items that are on applicant's property?
No, there are no current concerns as to junk on his property. As was testified earlier, he was forced to remove it.
Okay. And the shed is closed and in proper form? And do you have any issues with Mr. Boyko's current property?
His current property? No, I haven't, do not have issues with his current property, only the use.
And I apologize, I meant to introduce this earlier, but this is A6. Mr. Kozlik, do you recognize this photo?
Yeah, that's my shed next to the van.
And can you describe what's in front of the shed?
That's my water tub that I used to take ice baths in before a commercial business moved next door.
And...
And that's an old tractor. Once again, if anyone wants the old tractor, they can have it.
Okay, so it's acceptable in your mind for there to be an exposed tractor in your backyard? Is that correct?
Yeah, for residential purposes. Yeah, it should be gotten rid of, but I'm getting around to it.
Okay. So you, you believe that it appears that you're getting around to discarding of that truck based upon those conditions? Is that your testimony?
Yeah, that's the next one in line. There was some other, there was a lot of other stuff I had to get rid of before I got rid of that, but that's the next mission.
Okay. Final exhibit for the board I'm gonna ask to admit is A6.
Seven.
A7, I'm losing track. Thank you. This is another email that was obtained under the Open Public Records Act from Mr. Kozlik to Mr. Hollahan, Dr. Exalik, and Damian Gill. Do you recognize this email, which is dated May 22, 2023, Mr. Kozlik?
I do.
And could you please read for the board what you wrote in the second paragraph that I've highlighted?
"The display of decrepitude, cowardice, and kindergarten-level gaslighting is nothing short of legendary, and surely tales of such legend are already spreading throughout the community."
Do you believe that this level of hyperbole is properly affixed to the neighborly dispute that you've had with Mr. Boyko?
This was a general reference to his refusal, his continual refusal to meet with my elderly neighbors, who stood right in front of him and he drove right past them. I mean, it's just like, and then to come here and say you're a good neighbor, I just don't, I don't get it. I, I, I don't want, I, I don't wanna get personal about it. I, I just don't.
So outside...
This was something, yeah, I, I'll just, I don't have any problem with Mark or his family. I just...
Okay, so...
Yeah, it's just that these frustrations, these things, these frustrations build, so, you know.
Okay.
I'd rather be on good terms with them, whatever the outcome is here.
And just lastly, to sum up, besides this purported drive-by that occurred, was there any other attempt on your part to speak with Mr. Boyko about the situation?
No, I felt he should speak to the, my mother and... No, I felt he should speak to my mother and the elderly neighbor as they're the relevant stakeholders here, and it affects them most, it doesn't affect me as much, I'm a young guy, if there's noise, I can go outside, but these people are elderly residents, if there's commercial vehicles operating non-stop, they can't live their lives.
Did they make any attempt to speak with Mr. Boyko?
Yeah, they made, you know, they walked over to speak with him and he drove right past him.
Besides that purported incident, were there any other attempts?
I know my neighbor talked to him.
That's not responsive to the question, did your parents make any other attempts?
Well, my father is deceased, if he made an attempt, then there's something going on that I don't know about. My mother, other than that attempt, I'm not, I don't believe so. Maybe one other time, she may have, I'm not sure.
Thank you, Mr. Kozlik, I don't have anything further.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Kozlik, here for the board. Let me just see if there's anybody else there before, if you have something else you want to show us. Anybody else here in the room wish to be heard, please raise your hand or stand. Okay.
I have a quick question.
None, hold on.
When were these pictures taken?
I could ask my client, he'd be happy to authenticate them and provide a date frame.
I mean, it's got to be pretty current, that's what it looks like.
Okay. Okay. I guess that answers Mr. Kozlik's question. Is that okay? It's current?
Yeah.
Mr. Vodaci, you want to say something else, or there's pictures you have here you want us to see?
Did you want the board to show us?
Well, you're going to have to give them the attorney to see if we can see them, I don't know what they are and who took them, so they'd have to be...
Just so I could be clear, I know that these two individuals had an opportunity and seemed like they rested, can you kind of logistically tell us where we are? I would imagine that it would be the opportunity for other members of the public to comment? No?
There is no others, that's what I just asked.
Okay.
That's why I said I'd let him have the last word, because no one else wants to speak.
Did you want to say?
No, I'm...
Oh, okay.
No, thank you.
No, I didn't, I don't understand that Mr. Kozlik is on trial here.
He's not.
But they're showing him his yard.
Everything's on its own merits, sir, so the board takes note of issues, doesn't necessarily, but if you, I don't know what you have there, do you want us to see that?
Yes.
Oh, okay, you don't have to put them away.
If you would.
Yeah, you have to let the attorneys see them first before the board...
They don't want to see them.
Okay, well, our attorney's right here, this gentleman right here.
Here.
Yes, yes, sir.
If they're being admitted, I guess I do need to...
Why not?
And do you have multiple copies of them, or it's just one copy of each?
Just go back and see if we can hear you on the record before we discuss them. Let Mr. Collins see them. Let me ask you a question, did you take these?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And do you know about when you did it?
Two months ago.
Okay, beginning of the summer, like, late spring?
Well, yeah, well, you could probably see by the green, I'm not sure.
Okay.
I mean, all of this stuff has been removed, the zoning board told them to get out.
Okay.
So at this time, would you like these to be moved?
You're going to admit them into evidence?
That's all been removed.
Would you like for these, are you offering these to, yes, you provide, but I just want to confirm that you are offering these?
Yes.
Is that correct, sir? I think we're going to go one at a time with them. I'm sorry, I mean, we're going to go one at a time with them, do you have any objection?
I have no, if the gentleman just wants to have them entered into evidence, I wouldn't have an objection to him generally authenticating them, subject to my client's right to rebuttal on the authentication.
Of course, yeah, of course, let me go one at a time.
I don't think we need to...
Is there a group of what he intended?
Do you want to go a group of them?
I'm fine admitting the group as one for the board's sake, otherwise I'd sit there all night and I have no objection.
Count them and we'll make it one exhibit. This is going to be O, I guess, right?
Yeah.
O1?
Yes, I, yeah.
Bakers dozen, 13. It'll be marked O1. Briefly, could you explain, either I'm going to come down there or you're going to come up here, you stay over there, I got a better idea, I'm going to come over there. We have 13 pictures here, right?
I'm not sure.
Well, we counted them.
Yeah, okay.
There is 13, and what is this first one?
This is, this is his backyard.
This is Mr. Boyko's backyard?
Yes.
Okay, viewing from your yard or where's that?
My neighbor's yard.
Your neighbor's yard. Okay, what about the next one?
Same thing, from my neighbor's yard.
From your neighbor's yard, the same backyard?
Equipment stored, there's a tandem load of mulch there.
Okay. These vehicles belong to?
They belong to Boyko.
Okay, all right.
And they're not all there at that time.
No, I understand, I just want to clarify, this is a picture of his backyard.
Yes. Here's one of his sheds that we look at every day.
Okay, this is, obviously we're at a different angle or view of the property.
Basically the same angle, from, shooting from the side, it was not on the property.
Okay.
Here's some of the stuff that's been stored.
So this is just a little view of that, right?
Yes.
Okay, and that one?
The backyard.
Same thing?
Yeah.
These are all backyard pictures?
This is what's stored there.
And this was however early?
This is before he was told to leave.
Okay.
To clear everything out. Everything is clear now. There's a pickup liner there.
Okay.
Car door. 12 tires, ladders.
Okay.
I can just request a photo, the board certainly has the right board, but once they're done, I just want to make sure they're in one place.
Yep.
Yeah, and I'm numbering them on the back, just for our references.
That's equipment stored.
Okay.
There's three trailer frames stacked on one another.
So this looks like it was at least springtime because there's growth?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and that would be a similar picture, right? All right. Did you want to see these?
Yeah.
Mr. Chaney, you want these first?
Yes, please.
All right. I'm going to go back up there.
Mr. Collins, just as a question that just came up, for your A1, do you have an A1 for...
It was from the previous year.
In the previous, from the previous, okay, okay. Yeah, it was from the previous, they just, okay. Yep. When you did these, did you put them down like this?
Yeah.
Like that, okay. So, in other words, this would be three. This is three?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
I actually don't see in my notes what A1 was, but I was looking back to when we did that. I'm sure you have it, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, if you're waiting on me on A1, I did see it when I was reviewing the notes today, but perhaps I can correspond with the board secretary just to make sure that we have it in the record properly.
Thank you, okay.
Just as long as we have it and we don't need to reorder it.
Very good.
Yep, okay, so we have the 13 photos, so are we going to keep these, okay? Obviously, we're going to have to buy you copies, so, do you want to?
If this gentleman's concluded, Mr. Boyko just wants to kind of speak to the photos.
Okay, we'll have, well, this is what you wanted to show us, just the pictures, right? And to show us what it looked like. You took them and we've come to agree that it's probably early summer or late May, late spring, looking at the growth anyway.
So late May, and they're generally, they are photographs from your property looking onto the applicant's property, from the neighbor's property, looking onto the applicant's property.
From the side.
And this is 2024?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Could I say one more thing?
Yeah, go ahead.
We have 600 feet from, let's say, our house to the back of our properties. My wife walks her dogs four or five times a day. People that he's had there will stand on a property line like this and look at her, she's afraid to go out.
There's no fences there in between?
No fences, everything's clear, grass, that's all I have.
All right, thank you, sir, appreciate you coming back up.
Mr. Collins, you want these for?
Mr. Boyko did testify at the last hearing, he was under oath, I'll put him under oath again just for the record, please.
Mr. Boyko, obviously, just state your name for the record.
Mark Boyko.
Thank you, sir, and do you solemnly swear us the truth of the testimony for what you're about to provide?
I do.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Boyko.
Just very briefly, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Boyko, in front of you are photos that are provided by the objector. Can you, I believe you feel there's a discrepancy in the title frame that he mentioned that these photos could possibly have been taken, can you speak to that?
This first photo looks like it was taken...
You're going to have to look at, move the microphone in front of you, sir, that way you won't have to turn your head, there you go.
This first photo was taken, looks like in the fall time, there's no leaves on the trees, and since then, the entire property has been cleaned up and all the equipment has been removed back there.
So the fact that the trees are in that condition, the testimony earlier that these photos were from two months ago, you believe cannot possibly be accurate, is that right?
That is true.
Okay, and could you, again, I know you previously testified to this, speak to the current conditions of the property?
It's a long, narrow lot with a wooded area, and that's about it.
And so all the conditions in the photos provided by the applicant were remedied following last fall?
Yes.
And can you describe, can you confirm that everything was removed as you said?
Everything was removed from the property, and we had the zoning board come out and take photos and tell us that everything was okay.
Okay, and...
Sorry, not the zoning board, the zoning officer, yes.
And I previously offered this photo into evidence, I believe it was A4 or A5, can you confirm that, Mr. Boyko, this is the current condition of your property?
It is.
And can you describe this photo?
The lot's cleaned up, there's this shed there, all the equipment has been removed.
And if you were granted this really from the board, is your intention to have a full site plan perfected that would allow for the property to be hidden, is that correct?
If we were granted this, we'd be able to put our pole barn and put all this stuff in the barn, and nothing would be outside.
And the site plan also includes a fence between the properties?
Yes, it does.
And also...
And a two-row planted tree line.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Boyko, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Boyko. All right, I'll officially close the public portion at this point. Back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a quick summation if that's okay with the board, I realize it's the summer, so hopefully we can make this quick. As you heard from the testimony, this issue obviously arose from a neighborly dispute regarding the backs of the property. In response to that, the town obviously was involved rather than conversation directly with my client, but in response, he removed all the equipment that he had in the property pending disposition by this board, which is exactly the direction that he received from the zoning officer, and he did as told by having everything removed and coming to this board and spending, you know, a significant amount of money for a small landscaping company in order to get the necessary engineering, planning, traffic engineering due diligence done in order to present to this board. The goal of his application is really to allow for the minor storage of landscaping equipment to allow his small business to operate with a site plan that would need to come back before this board and would have the appropriate improvement so that the entire storage would be inside a pole barn, apart from the neighbors, with a fence up that would entirely prevent any view of the operation, and done so to the satisfaction of the objectors that reached out to us from the HOA, as you heard from testimony earlier. I just want to correct a few things as part of the summation, there was some discussion about a two-way road, my client has absolutely no expectation of a two-way road, and if one were required by the county, I happen to think that it could be fatal to the application, but I don't think one would be necessary because if you take a close look at the traffic impact that my client placed in the record and that Mr. Ray had in his report, the trucks are all going out in the morning to do their landscaping for the day and returning that evening. There's, it all occurs at once in one shift because there's only one crew that Mr. Boyko uses, it's a very small operation. So as a result, there isn't that concern of ongoing traffic as has been surmised and kind of conjectured in testimony. So I do believe that if there were anything of that sort, it would be picked up by this board at the site plan phase and that any testimony to the effect that that would be a necessary consequence of this use variance, I think is just not correct, we would be back here in a few months if you were to grant this use variance, and you certainly would have your opportunity as a board to review that further. With respect to the location, obviously trucks are a negative of externality to many people, but if you were to have a location for such a thing, and the point of the board in having the ability to grant D1 and D2 use variances is because of peculiar natures of a property, and I would submit that if a landscaping business, obviously landscaping businesses are part of our community, we all need to have our homes kept up at the appropriate time if we don't wish to do it ourselves, and I think the ideal location for the proper sighting of one would be along a major county roadway like County Route 516 as compared to perhaps a residential roadway. And I would also submit, as we discussed at the last meeting with respect to the de-variants proofs, this is a uniquely situated property with a very narrow but long lot and, which would allow, with the proposed construction, hundreds, I believe between 200 and 300 feet of buffer to the rear, and obviously fencing to the side, and also, the property on one side adjoins a large municipal property, which makes it unique compared to the other properties and its situation, such that if the site plan comes forward and with the proper proofs placed on the record, the positive criteria would outweigh the negative criteria, and my client would simply be able to store his landscaping equipment and continue to, his desire to benefit the community with that. And lastly, I would just note that, you know, you obviously saw several pictures at the end here, and, you know, I think the photos depict that my client has gone out of his way during this dispute to make his property look appropriate, and that compared to other properties that are in his immediate vicinity, including next door to him, there are properties that are not in a proper state of repair, and that my client is simply trying to do the right thing here by, in light of the objection, proposing to spend a significant amount of money to have this equipment hidden and stored in a way where it wouldn't impact the neighbors and to accede to their concerns. So with that, we very much thank the board for its consideration of this, and we would ask that it grant the use variance and give us an opportunity to do the engineering and to come back to this board for further discussion about a site plan.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. I would say to all the people involved, as we all know, homes are precious, they're our kingdoms, they're, you know, something we struggle to keep up all of our life, so our individual properties are very important to us and personal, so I feel for the people and I feel for Mr. Boyko too, at the same time. You know, the pictures going back and forth, I don't really think the board is weighing that one way or the other. He stated that he cleaned it up, I think we know from Mr. Hollahan, I think it was Dan at that time, that it was cleaned up, so we give him credit for that, and I know he did actually move all of his equipment off there. Obviously, he's operating out of somewhere else, I guess the inconvenience is that it's not on his own property. Having said that, you're asking for a D1 use variance here, this is an R20 zone. 2017 master plan exemption, I'll read from page three of the memo, date it on, July 31st, the latest one. It's from Mr. Darji, Ms. Sawant, Mr. Tetralt. And I highlight on page three of seven, at the bottom under F, "The master plan reexamination report last revised does not specifically include any recommendation for the site, the subject property in our 20 zone." It's interesting that Mr. Kozlak said, you know, maybe the government, the governance here should change it, and then we can all sell them for commercial. Well, the government hasn't changed it, and it's not likely that they're going to do so. It is an R20 zone. I heard from the planner, Ms. Keller, and she spoke to the pole barn. You know, the, the issue we have in the pole barn, too, the, the pole barn is like twice the size of the house. We have a second primary use on, on the property, so I have a problem with that. She, she spoke to, obviously, the positive and the negative criteria, but I have to say, one, I don't think it's a benefit, it's the use is inherently beneficial whatsoever. He can op, he's operating his business fine. He's parking his equipment somewhere else. So I don't think by him parking it there is gonna make it any more beneficial to the community. And I don't think that the purposes of the land use law are advanced by this. Why would we change zone by variance? I don't, I don't, I don't think that that's necessary, nor do I think it's proper here. Demonstrating that the site is particularly suited to the proposed use, I don't think so. I think these are long train car lots that abut each other. We've heard from people that are under oath that say there's constant in and out traffic. I think it is improper in a, in a, in a residential zone, that other people would have to suffer the indignity of listening to noise and commutation. The man has a business to run, I understand. He'll be out doing snow in the winter, and he's cutting lawns and doing landscaping and probably other masonry work for pavers, for whatever he does, but I can't stand behind this. I really can't. I don't feel that it meets the criteria, and I certainly am not gonna support a D1 use variance. Having said that, I'll invite any of the other board members to make any comments.
Yes, hi. As far as the accessory building that you want to put up the pole barn, it's actually four times what's permitted. That's the non-conforming major issue. Other than that, there's no positive criteria to fellow neighbors, the noise, the smell, and the constant traffic. And there's no guarantee that this business wouldn't grow in the future to have more than five employees, which means there'd be more traffic. And this, leaving a business here would change the whole concept of R20. And Olbridge is a residential area, and we'd like to keep it that way. Second of all, the applicant assumed for years he could operate his business on his property, and he did. So now he's at a lot, he's still operating his business, and there's no hardship for him because he still can run his business in a different area. So I can't support it.
Anybody else want to be heard?
I would like to be. I concur with the commissioner. It's just not appropriate, from everything I've heard. I commend Mr. Kozlak for his well-written email, or emails. I think it's commendable that you didn't cause a conflict by approaching the neighbor. You tried to handle it in a diplomatic manner, but I concur with the commissioner. Just out of place.
Anyone else? Okay.
I'm sorry, sir, this will just change the characteristics of the neighborhood, approving something like this.
Counselor, we've heard from the board. I'm gonna ask Mr. Collins if he wants to take a vote.
No objection, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, this would be for D1 use variance for operation of a landscaping business out of the home in the R120 zone, the R20 zone, excuse me. Someone in favor of moving it or move it for denial?
Chevalier, move it for denial.
Second, it's Skagno.
You're second for what, denying?
Denial.
Okay.
Denial.
When you take the roll call, yes is to deny. No would be not to deny, okay? Thank you.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Skagno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
No.
Mr. Victoria?
Yes.
Chairman Solomon?
Yes. Motion has, for the application, has been denied.
Thank you for your time.
I thank you and all your professionals as well. Let's see, we have just left on here. We have no other business except any other one from the public that would like to be heard this evening on zoning matters. If you are, raise your hand.
Just extremely quickly, sir, there, I didn't want to interrupt, just in the middle of the hearing. There were some other photographs in here that were in this when it was provided to me. I just, they, I, I mean, at this point. Well, I just want to...
They're not part of this.
They're, they're not part of this because they were not, but did you intend for these to also be? Okay, okay, I just wanted to, okay, I just wanted to clarify, okay. Sorry.
All right, any, no one else I see in the public wants to be heard this evening, so I'll close that. Anything from the township that we need to know? Ms. Sawant?
For a special meeting that has come up, and it's for a business that on, like, in the OG zone, that particular business is not permitted. It's more, it, it is a use that may have been permitted in the EDO zone, but we have the OG zones, and they need to come back to the board. There is no site plan. They're asking for a site plan waiver, and they have put in a request. Should be circulating an email shortly, so please let me know if the board is available and would entertain a special meeting.
Okay, I think the board has tried to be as cooperative as we can, and we'll certainly try to accommodate the date, if, if most of us can make, make it. From legal end, anything that you want to pass on, Mr. Chaney?
Nothing to pass on. Thanks for having me here tonight.
Well, no, thank you for being of counsel to us. We, we do appreciate that. We didn't know we were gonna keep you here this late.
Don't worry.
Board members on my left, anything you want to say? No? Nothing? Okay. Our next meeting is?
August 15th.
August 15th. I hope everyone can make that. Our prayers and wishes are with Ms. Andrews' husband, who is ailing severely, so keep him in your thoughts, please. All right, someone move for adjournment, please?
Chevalier, move it.
Is there a second?
Seconds, Skagno.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We stand adjourned.